This meeting of the Gadsden City Council, I shall order the chair calls on Ivan Nelson for his role call.
Councilman Harris?
Here.
Williams?
Here.
Avery?
Here.
Eccles?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business, and Councilman Williams will lead the invocation today. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray, Father, we thank you for this opportunity to assemble here today. Father God, we thank you for the strength to participate, Father, in these proceedings. Lord God, we ask that you would bless those in attendance, Father God, bless this council, bless the mayor, Father God, that we may make decisions that are meaningful, Father, and that are beneficial to this great city, Father. We thank you, Father, we love you, and we glorify you this day, 14, in Jesus' name we ask it all.
Amen.
Amen. I pray allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Warigo.
I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that your cell phone is turned off from vibrating. Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works and Public Safety Committee meetings, work session, and council meeting on July the 5th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of July the 1st through the 7th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation, Mayor. Unfinished business, we have none. Now, and this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license. CVS Pharmacy, 4845, has applied for an off-premises retail beer and wine license at 806 Hope Street. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Yes, sir, my name is Ramona Williams.
Please come to the microphone. State your name and address for the one.
My name is Ramona Williams. I live at 3207 Sheahan Avenue. I am employed by CVS Pharmacy, and we are applying for the license for, to sell alcohol.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Ten is a resolution authorizing community development and housing initiative program. This amends the city's program to address limited emergency repairs and painting for low and moderate income homeowners. The change will give the option to waive the spending cap of $5,000 on a case basis. Up to $7,500 can be spent upon recommendation of the community development planner, and approval of the planning director. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I did make contact with the Federal Home Loan Bank, and they're forwarding that information to me, so hopefully, before the day is over with, we'll have that information to give to the mayor's office. Mayor, you were upstairs, right? Okay. I did make contact with them, and they're gonna be sending me the names of the banks who are participating in the program, and the guidelines for accessing those funds. So, I should have those there shortly.
Can I say a little something? On this program, it's $5,000, it could be up to $7,500 for emergency repairs, and if you're 62 or over and meet the income guidelines, there's no children under six years old in the property, then you can get this done. We put on some roofs and some heating and cooling for people, and it's money that's available, and we got it in the budget. And for every year you live there, you knock, we knock 20% off, and after five years, you don't have to repay the loan. So, we want to get that out on TV, that's why I want to say something about it. It's a good program.
Have we robed?
Take the vote.
Have we robed?
No.
We have not.
Okay.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Number 11 is a resolution authorizing residential rental agreement with Somaica Parker. This is for the lease of a resident and property located at 1021 Seventh Avenue. Term is for one year, and the monthly rent is $325. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
12 is a resolution authorizing agreement with FLW Outdoors. This is for the city to sponsor a fishing team, held June 18th, in the amount of $1,000. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
13 is a resolution authorizing collaboration agreement with the Gadsden City Board of Education regarding Even Start. This extends the partnership agreement for fiscal year 2012 for city buildings at 801 East Broad Street and 705 South Ninth Street. City will, has also agreed to provide transportation for the Even Start Family Literacy Program. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New businesses, is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have one item I'd like to introduce, to be considered, for unanimous decision today, to be considered today. I'd like to introduce document number 2011/262, awarding bid number 3173 to Angelo LaFreight Construction Company for the Black Creek Trail Enhancement Project.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Oh, this is for the unanimous consent.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
When do we, seriously, get the name, are we gonna leave it Black Creek Trail?
Trail.
I know, but we had a gentleman who worked so hard on this project, I mean, he almost like a family member, I see him so much. I think we ought to really consider naming that after him whenever we get this together.
Did we not, in the past, make some resolution or something?
Well, I made a suggestion to that effect, but I don't know if we ever did anything legally. Did we do anything legally?
Yeah, J.R. Condrum did that. He did a resolution. He did a resolution. J.R. Condrum did a resolution by that name.
Did we?
Yes, we did.
Roger said we did?
Yes.
Yeah, he did.
But did we ever vote on it?
He did, but...
But did we ever vote on it?
No, we didn't vote on it, no.
So it stands until we put it...
Yeah, so will you pull that back up?
Roger, what was your comment?
He did not want to name that.
He didn't want a name after him, but that is, he don't have a vote up here.
Well, yeah, but I think, you know...
I think we should keep Black Creek, I think we should keep Black Creek in that name some way.
I agree, I don't have a problem with that, I just think he needs to be recognized some kind of way, too.
Robert, how about if it is?
I think a plaque honoring him on the trail up there would be very appropriate.
If it's a Black Creek Trail, and that's the name of it, I think a portion of the trail, like you said, maybe we'll have a plaque on a portion, 200 yards or a part of, would be named for him.
Let's do something, seriously, I mean...
They got time to pick something.
Yeah, something can be done.
Like I said, I don't care what he says, he don't have a vote. You know, we vote, so he can say what he wants to. But he's worked real hard on this thing, I mean...
Yeah, and he's worked so hard, you know, I think if we, we do want to consider his desires, you know, when we're talking about naming something.
Okay.
But we do need to, I agree with you, we need to do something to commemorate him for the work that he did.
Okay.
So, we're at the voting stage now, again.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business? Your own, the department reports, Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just got a couple of items that I want to report on from Parks and Recreation. We had the Cal Ripken Nine-Year-Old State Tournament at the Gadsden Sports Complex, started Friday, finished up yesterday, we had a little bit of delay on Sunday from the rain. We had nine teams, seven of them were from out of town, had to stay in our hotels, as well as in Rainbow City, they hosted the Eight-Year-Olds at the same time, which those folks had, they had 13 teams, and those folks had to stay in our hotels as well. So our hotels and our restaurants should have had plenty of kids and parents this weekend, and we hope to, that's the first time we've ever hosted the Cal Ripken State Tournament at the sports complex. We had a lot of positive comments about the way we treated the people, and we hope to make this a yearly thing, and then get one or two age groups over there every year, because we think it'll make an impact with the folks staying in our hotels and restaurants. Also, I want to give you a report, we started opening our community centers back June 4th, and I'm kinda gonna give you a report of how they're doing. We opened Walnut Park, Carver, and East Gadsden, and they're open four hours a day, I think, 10 to 12. And Walnut Park is, of course, we've only had five people utilize it for the five Saturdays that we've been open. Carver, we've had 76 utilize it, and we were, we didn't count the Juneteenth weekend as part of our numbers, and East Gadsden, we've had, they've been doing adults and children. We've got, had 64 adults and seven children at East Gadsden, so two out of the three are being, you know, successful right now. We'll continue to do this throughout the summer, till school starts back, and then we'll look at it again at that point in time to see if we want to continue to keep them operating. Also, too, I think, since y'all been out of town one or two weeks, I think, in the last two or three weeks, and the, we had the Barbaryan Challenge, and some of you may not have heard how that turned out, and I'll kinda let you know that it was very successful. We had around 700 participants participate on that Saturday. Around nine states were represented during the challenge. The mayor came up and got to see all the different outfits these folks dress, and just about everything, or nothing, and they had a, they had a good time, and thankfully, we had, we had three injuries out of the 700, and the most serious one, I think, was probably the band member that got overheated from heat exhaustion, and so the rest of them were just minor injuries, and it went very well. They're thinking that next year we'll have twice as many as we had this year, so we may have to limit the number of people we can have in it, just for the fact that there's nowhere to park, because we can't let them park up on the area that we're using, and so we had to bus them in, or bring them in in golf carts and all, and we may run into a parking problem next year, actually, so. But anyway, it went very good, for some of you who are out of town, and just wanted to give you an update on Parks and Rec. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Ms. Carey, will you go? On the weekend uses of the centers, maybe we, I know we started that program after school, was out, we have a communications problem here in this city, getting word out and stuff like that. It might help us, when school starts back, to get the information out to the young people at the schools, that they will be open on Saturday.
Correct.
I think you'll probably see a upswing in the usage of it. Probably a lot of them just don't know that they're open at this point in time.
Yeah, that I'm sure, that's the case.
So if we can work on that.
Okay.
I think that might help us some.
Carey, how do we, how have we historically been getting information to, well, let me back up. Do we have a Facebook presence relative to just getting information out to people in general, and young people specifically?
We, on certain events, we do, on special events, we have some staff that uses their own personal Facebook to promote, like the Summer Concert, the Smoke on the Falls, and stuff like that, but as far as us in our department, no. We do have a, you know, our webpage that we can put information on, you know, to say the community centers, the ones that are open, the times, and all that, and I'm not even sure if that's been done, now that you've said that.
Yeah, let's give some consideration to social media, I mean, not just Facebook, but social media in general.
Right.
Because I had an opportunity to ask, I got hit so much with the question of, well, we don't know where the information is, we're not being told, so I asked, how do you receive information so we can put it there? And, you know, almost unanimously, those who were giving me the feedback said, well, Facebook is big for us. So maybe we should, because I know you've been hit with it a lot.
Right.
We don't, we don't know about a lot of what's going on, so maybe we should really consider social media to help us get the word out.
Yeah, okay.
Makes sense. I see it makes sense.
Thank you, Carey.
Is there any other department reports, committee? Citizens request, Mrs. Ted Jones, to speak about property at 23 Broad Street and adjacent properties. Could you please come forward? Come to the microphone.
Just come to the mic.
State your name and address for the city clerk.
My name is Jane Jones, and I am here today to represent my children and myself. We own the property of 423 Broad, which...
Could you pull your mic down just a little bit?
Which is known as the Hoffman Building, the old Hoffman Building. And we have a major problem. The Mosses have not been very good stewards in maintaining the property adjacent to us all the way through to the corner of Fifth. They own all of it, and I, I don't know about those buildings, but the building adjacent, which is the Hughes Building, has been a terrible, terrible problem for us. Three years ago, my daughter had closed her shop, the Broad Street Basket Company, and was in the process of cleaning it out in order to reopen. There were several storms like we've had lately, and when she goes back in, the buildings flooded, and carpets are ruined, the cabinets, the ceiling, the merchandise, everything. We called the roofer, Mr. Ricky Highfield, who had maintained our roof. He said, you don't have a problem, there's a hole in the building adjacent to you. So, then I called the insurance company, they refused to pay for the damages, because they said it originated in the adjacent building. Well, if you've ever tried to do anything with the Mosses, that was a dead-end street, getting him, or if he had insurance to pay for it. So it resulted in us having to sue the insurance company, which we've been in a battle with them for the last two and a half years. Finally, we have reached a settlement, and now we are ready to do something about repairing our building. In the meantime, over the two-year period, water has continued to come in, and there is mold, and there's mildew, but the building, I can't fix the building. This is a building that is a very historical, the inside of our building is, still has the original cabinets, flooring, ceiling, the safes, everything, they're over 100 years old, and it's going down the tube due to his lack of responsibility. I've got to have some help. I've asked the, Mr. Hightower came back and looked at it again, and he said, you cannot, you've got to put a new roof on it, you can't patch it, it is too far gone. I have brought pictures of that roof as it joins our building. He was afraid to walk on it for fear that it would fall in. I've got to have some help. If I ask the Mosses to fix it, their usual way of fixing something is the way of least resistance. They will end up, as they've done in the past, coating a coat of tar, which is just a Band-Aid, it's not going to stop the flooding. All of those buildings are flooded. It is creating a health problem, it's creating a safety factor. If there was a fire, and the fire department had to go get on those buildings, they're liable to fall through due to the rotted condition. If you don't do something, you have got, walk down the street, and you can smell the mold and the mildew. Black mold is dangerous, and you've got a half a block that's covered up in it. If you don't believe it, send the health inspector, or send the city inspector, someone down to look at these buildings. The merchants that occupy Broad Street have given up their money, their time, their effort to establish good and decent buildings, and this whole half a block is ruining their ability to function. It makes people think that the city is not doing well, because a whole portion of it looks like it is destitute, and it is becoming a severe and very dangerous health problem to the city. And I think that you need to address it. I mean, you can tell me that you can't do anything about condemning because you can't see the roof, but we're beyond seeing the roof, we've got other problems, all of us do, and you've got to do something to help it. She would like to say a few words because of the fact that she represents more of the other merchants, and we also have a petition that the merchants have signed on those that were not here. All of these in the back of the building today are representatives from Broad Street that have the same concerns and that are upset. We've been begging for years for help, and we don't have any place to go but to y'all.
You stepped away from the mic, so it's hard to hear you.
I said, we don't have any place to go for help but to y'all. As one individual, I'm not gonna have an impact on the Mosses, but you, as the council, and as my salvation and representative, should, and it's your duty for my safety and my health, as well as all the citizens that want to shop and do business down there. We've reached a crisis point with it.
Thank you, Jane. I'm Heather Copeland, Heather Hicks Copeland, actually. I'm here representing two groups of people. I am a board member for DJI, and my family has Hicks Shoes on Broad Street, very prominent business, that's been there for about 70 years now. And I'd like to just follow up on what Jane has said, there's a lot of business owners that are here today. We have tried for years and years and years to deal with the Mosses, and to have them to repair their buildings for safety reasons, for the looks of that, and as you know, we have worked tremendously hard as business owners. Downtown, our First Friday has become exceptionally wonderful, very profitable, might I add, to the city, and we feel like, if we can put this much effort, and we can comply by the rules and regulations that's set forth by DJI, and also by the city, that we have to maintain our properties, it's unacceptable for them not to maintain their properties. What's good for one business owner should be good for every business owner. So with that being said, I also have a petition that is signed for the board, and for the business owners that could not be here today, that we'd like to present to the council, as I am showing them that we're not the only people that feel this way, we have, like I said, tried for years. They're not gonna do anything unless you push their hands to do that. The buildings are detriment, they look terrible, not just for the looks of the downtown Gadsden area, and we've worked very hard to make it presentable. We've brought in a lot of people, and a lot of shopping. If you notice, down Broad Street, it has changed tremendously, we're very proud of that, and we'd like for the Mosses to repair those, because they are in the 400 block, it's just right across from our shoe store, where you can see it day in and day out, and when you see rats and you see pigeons, it's a health reason, Jane is right, and it needs, something needs to be done, and if we can't do that, then we would graciously like for the city council to please step in, and to finally do something about that, to make Gadsden the way it should be for everybody. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All of you merchants who are back there are representing a merchant, would you please stand so we can... If there was ever a nuisance that needed abating, that is one that needs to be abated. I know they've worked real hard to try to figure out how to do it. Mayor, you got any comments you'd like to make about it?
We, you know, we did have to go all the way through with the getting estimates and putting out a bid and all before, but the windows in the first one, but I think Brian Harbison with the Build Department, he's not here today, he didn't, I don't think he knew y'all were coming, but we're, be doing something. Brian, you got any comments on that? Brian Greer? Okay.
Okay, we appreciate you coming.
We do.
I think, I think we have the ability, and I think we should exercise this ability, to make the proper repairs on there, and if nothing else, put a lien against the property. I think we ought to move in that direction.
That's, that's what we were doing on the first one, and right before we did that, then they went in and put the windows in and all that, but we'll move as quick as we can.
I think it's absolutely ridiculous, the amount of time and money and effort that they've put into this.
I agree.
And it's a continuing situation. I'd like to ask you, have you contacted the health department, based on the mold?
Yeah, we haven't.
I've had a lot of luck notifying the health department to come out and look at mold, septic tank situations and this thing. Please call them, I think you won't be surprised, but you can get a lot of help from that end, and they do swing a pretty good stick, I hope.
Yeah, that, to reiterate Ben's point, he's absolutely correct, there's, there's more recourse than, than just the structural recourse. I mean, you, you can actually utilize the health department to help move them in the right direction, so I encourage you to follow his instruction there, that's important.
Yeah. Mayor, did I understand you right, that we are in the process of doing something about the building next door to her, if not?
We need to go ahead on all of them, not just one in town.
And I agree with that, that we need to do all of them.
Well, that was gonna be my question, what, I mean, what's the alternative? I mean, you can't tear down all those buildings, then you have a big old vacant section downtown, so, I mean, we, we need to look at it, and of course, again, get with the property owners, and I had an uneasy feeling when we let people come up and name folks, and they're not here to defend themselves, too, so, next time, if y'all just say property owners as opposed to naming people, I would appreciate that, that's...
Well, we can always ask the Mosses to come by and explain why the roof is leaking.
I understand that, Ben, I just...
That's what I'm saying, that's the gracious thing to do.
I'm just saying, I have an uneasy feeling when we let folks come up and talk about it.
Oh, I do, too, I do, too. But we'll invite the Mosses to come up, and I'd love to hear why...
They got, they got a right to do that.
Their roof is doing that.
They got a right to do that, all I'm saying is, just be careful when people come up and use names. If they have said property owners, then that's okay, but, you know, again, I know the media will go and research who the property owners are, but at the same time, when you start using people's names like that, you start defaming character and stuff, and you get yourself, and you might get us in trouble for letting you do it, and you might get yourself in trouble for doing the same thing, so I just wanted to warn them about that.
I agree. Mayor, can I ask you?
Yeah.
On commercial property, as opposed, or similarly, we do residential property where we vote to abate it, and then we rehab it on the outside roof, and so on and so forth, and go at it from that angle?
Yeah, that's, Brian, do you remember how much it was on the windows on that first one, we had to?
I remember that.
Put out?
Well, they did, so we don't...
Shane?
No, but I mean, we had to do bids and get...
I thought it was like 16 grand to rehab the, what we were gonna do.
The front, yeah.
To rehab the entire, so...
16, 16 thou?
No, 16 thou. That was just the front.
But Mayor, we are gonna follow...
What we'll have, what we'll have to do, if I'm correct, Brian, is get somebody to look at all of them, and get some specs, and bid it out if they don't start moving on it, and then at that point, if they haven't done anything, we can go in and do the work and...
That's what I wanted to hear.
Get a lien on the property. That's right.
Thank you.
I know today, y'all, everybody in the back, back there, the property owners wasn't in pre-council meeting, but we did, we all went to Huntsville a couple weeks ago in a roundtable with our attorneys up there through the league, they did talk about some stuff you can do towards properties, and we gave the number to Roger today, the number that, that Mr. Harris and Mr. Avery was in about those classes, and he's supposed to do some research on that, so that might be valuable help to us when he gets that done.
Yeah, I mean, I think we got a recourse, it's just that we just gotta do the research and come up with...
Roger, how long you think it might take you to get?
I would have to talk to the attorney at the Gadsden, what is, is Mayor saying that he can do?
I was talking about the roundtable attorneys with the League of... I was talking about the roundtable attorneys with the League of Municipalities in Huntsville. That's what it was, the League of Attorneys. Alabama League.
Yeah.
We have the authority in the historical districts and in the downtown to, if the property owner doesn't make the repairs to abate the nuisance, we have the authority to go in and do it and put a lien against his property, and that's the only recourse look like we got. And I think we should push forward with that.
I think the mayor's on the right track. I believe he's already got that nailed. So we're in good shape there.
So one thing I'm pretty sure they're going to want to know is who do they contact relative to progress? And if they want updates on it, should they be reaching out to?
The mayor's office.
To Shane?
The Building Department, Brian Greer, Brian Harbison, or myself, that they'll be the ones that's right behind it.
I think we've brought this out, you know, and this has been made public now, the problems that we have downtown. I think the merchants downtown have done too much, have made things too nice downtown for us to continue to let something blight our downtown area. So I think you're hearing here from the council that there will be some action taken to improve whatever situation that we have going on downtown. You will get some help from your city council and your mayor.
You can see the council is behind you 100%. I'm sorry that we hadn't been able to do something sooner, but there's been a lot of research done already in trying to find out what we can do. And when you start looking at that much property and you start thinking about rehabbing it and the city, and the city doing it, not that we shouldn't do it, and I'm in favor of doing it, don't misunderstand, but it's going to be a tremendous job. But it'd be worth it, in my opinion, to spend the money, put a lien against the property, and eventually, if they don't do something about it, about paying for it with paying up the lien, then I'm taking the property and selling it to somebody else. Okay, but we appreciate y'all coming. Thanks. Remarks by the mayor of the council. Ben, you want to start?
Sure. I won't go completely back to the downtown situation here, but I hope that you know that we're in total sympathy, and I know I am. If you need any help, just call Mr. Avery. He is your council person. You want to know who to go to directly? He did this to me on some cases on the mountain. I'm not paying him back. But seriously, I am in total sympathy with you, and I think it's time to do something. And I know the mayor's lined it up, and it's going to happen. I have no doubt about that. Went to the Ritz Theater last night, had a grand opening, reopening over there. We got a brand-new theater, haven't we, Bill?
Absolutely. Beautiful.
Got air conditioning you wouldn't believe, got good-looking bathrooms, crying rooms. Only bad part was they wouldn't let us in there. We had to sit outside at 120 degrees and say a few words before they give us a bottle of water and let us in. We, we had a good time, and y'all, if you have up been to Wall Street to see the Ritz Theater and the Marquee and the interior, and Shane, y'all did a beautiful job, Lisa and everybody, please go over there. And if you're thinking about seeing some of their plays, not if you're thinking about it, just please go ahead and get tickets and go over there and see it. It's going to be a focal point of that, that whole area of town over there. It's beautiful, and we appreciate it so much.
That's all I have.
Johnny? I echo what Ben did say about the Ritz Theater. We did all go over there last night. We had a ribbon cutting, and some of us spoke over there about times when we was little kids at the Ritz and what went on. And Ben wasn't born in Alabama City. The mayor myself was. And back in those days when we was coming up, nobody had air conditioning. Everybody had those old fans and those old screen doors. So me and the mayor didn't wear no suit or tie or anything like that, or coat. We know how it was going to be out there from the olden days. But we did have a good time, and I appreciate everybody that came on the council last night coming. And I just think it's an asset to Alabama City over there. That's all we got.
I'd just like to make a comment about our procedure on the council. You might, just observing how we don't discuss a lot of issues that come up, we pass them rather quickly without much discussion. The truth of the matter is, we have our work session upstairs of pre-council, and we discuss all these issues in detail before we come down here. So sometimes we don't rehash them down here, but we are, I beg your pardon. We do go over everything in detail and discuss it thoroughly before we come down and vote on it. That's all I have to say.
Well, in fact, we do it a week before, so we'll have a week to look into anything that we're going to pass today. We've, we've had all the last week to do it.
Okay. Thanks, Ben, for passing the buck.
No problem.
It's my district, and I don't mind. I was just listening to Shane when they looked into that one particular building. You said $60,000? Yeah. Okay. I, I just know it's going to be an expensive project, and I want the people to understand that. And unless, I'm chairman of the Finance Committee, unless they know where some money that I don't know, we talking about quite a bit of money here, Mayor. So you, you need to start looking, because you could probably do a half a million or better if you're talking about doing the entire block there. So I just want them to understand this is a money situation too. Not that we can't do it. The thing is that we're willing to do it. Can we come up with those fundings to do all of that? And by the way, if you notice, we talked about a gentleman a few minutes ago, and a trail. We never did mention the gentleman's name. And that's why I have problems sometime when people come up and mention folks' names. You can get into a serious situation sometime when you start naming folk. We just talked about an individual who had worked hard on that trail, and we would like to possibly name it after him. Just be careful when you go to a public forum and start naming folks, because you can get yourself in a bind when you start doing that. That was just, just a cautionary measure. That's all I wanted to try to get over. So hopefully, we can come up with something. I know the mayor's got a rabbit in his hat, so he's going to pull out all that money somewhere, and we'll go down and fix all the buildings, and everybody will be happy.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, again, and I think, I thank you for bringing your issue, and I think you can see that the council pretty much holistically is in support of whatever the city has the capacity to do. You know, we run, we run into these kinds of issues throughout our districts. It's very difficult when, you know, when the proposition is to, for the city to get involved in private property. But, but we're not helpless. So there are some things that we can do. And again, thank you for the manner in which you presented your case. I always appreciate that. Just a couple of updates on things that, or a couple of things I want to highlight. Of course, we've had our second meeting regarding the youth, the youth explosion or youth summit that I've been speaking to for quite some time. And so we're moving forward and, you know, more, more, more will come later regarding the format. But I'll tell all those who are interested that our idea of it is, again, a, and we're getting a lot of support. We haven't said no to anybody that's interested in coming on board. The only people we've had, we've said no to are those who complain about not being asked. And so if they, if they complain about not being asked, then the answer to them is no, because they're self-motivated, and we don't need that for our young people. So, so again, this, this event is targeted for the 17th of September. We're going to be having a panel discussion with our youth. We're going to try to, you know, make it a light, some sound, and a big event for our young people. And, and we're going to have a panel of personalities to talk to them about issues that are important to them. And then that, that event, all those who participate in that event will be allowed to attend a, will be allowed to attend a dance afterwards at convention hall. So, you know, we're, we're just looking to add something to the calendar for our kids so that they can have something to look forward to, and we hope that we'll get some good information out of that to be able to use. And no, it's not a city-sponsored event, but it is something that I really am going to try to push and support where possible. The last thing is I wanted to recognize Gaston City High School's AP students. Those students were taking AP, AP classes and who've had the opportunity to test here recently. Those young folks actually surpassed the global percentage for, for passing scores. I think 61% of those kids scored a three or better, and the scale is one being the lowest score and, and five being the best score you can have. So again, I am always proud when our students, you know, score well and perform well, in particular when you compare them to a global standard. So I think that's something we ought to recognize them for. Thank you.
Your, Robert, you want to come back and ask?
Yeah, I'm sorry. That social media, I just got a text. The late Johnny Huff Senior, I think most of city employees know Johnny Huff. Johnny worked for the city for a number of years. He was killed in an automobile accident this past weekend. His funeral will be this Saturday at 1:00 p.m. at Emmanuel Baptist Church, and that church is located at 950 Forest Avenue. I think a lot of people know Johnny. Johnny also worked over at Emma Sampson High School as a janitor, and he was killed in an automobile accident. So his funeral will be this Saturday at 1:00 p.m. I just got, just got that information.
Thank you, Mr. President. Back to, excuse me, back to the Black Creek Trail. I, I had the opportunity to, to traverse that piece of property back there from the Wedding Chapel, all the way out past Jeep Hill and, and the gentleman, I'm going to, I'm going to name the gentleman that took me out there and put me on that trail and liked to kill me out there, Ed. And I, but I'll tell you what, I really enjoyed it. Now, you, you, it's almost like you are 100 miles from civilization when you walk that trail down through there. I'm, I'm going to encourage all of you to do it. It's so quiet and peaceful and serene down in that valley down there. And when you're walking in there, I mean, and you're just, you know, a stone's throw from possibly Meagan Boulevard or any of those other streets over there, and you can't hear a thing over in there. So I encourage everybody to participate in and walk that trail, you know, whenever you have an opportunity, because I think this is just going to be something good for us, especially for nature lovers and for those people who just enjoy a moment of serenity. You know, you will enjoy that. And I'd like, I'd like to thank Kira for bringing us up to date on what we've been striving to have, and that is the community centers open on Saturdays. And additionally, as we see the opportunity present itself, we will try to get some evening hours, but we've got to support those open units on Saturdays. Now, the numbers that we have for Carver and East Gaston Community Center are beautiful. Waldorf Park, I need to encourage you to be out there on Saturdays so that we can continue to keep that, that recreation center open on Saturdays. I promised when we, when we went on this endeavor that we would support it, that our citizens would support these buildings being open on Saturdays. And we can, if we're not going to do it, then I can't justify having people there. So I'm going to ask you to do it so that we can carry this program on over into the fall after school starts. It's just as critical to have a building open on Saturday after school starts as it is during the summer when they're out, you know, when they have six days to, to play. Now, they'll only have one day on Saturday, so I encourage you to participate and make the announcement and get that out to our citizens to, to participate in that program. I'll have a District One meeting this, this coming Monday at 6:00 at East Gaston Community Center. All District One residents, please attend. Any citizen of Gaston is welcome to attend. Thank you.
I've been telling y'all along with Johnny that Alabama City is God's country. That's why it's so beautiful over there. I just want to say on, on the, going back to the Broad Street, we'll have to get specs, and then we'll have to bid it out and get some estimates, see what we can come up with. And my question, Roger, I've got a question for you. The money we spent last time we didn't get, can we, if we spend that money doing that and then they come, owners come in at the last second and start doing some things, can we file and get our money back? Okay, that's good, because it's pretty expensive once you get somebody to do the specs on it and then bid it out. So that'll be good. Okay. Another thing, I know we got a lot of grass. We got about 600 lots, and we're working on getting possession of all of them. And then we can, we got some builders who want to build some houses or the property owners on either side of the lot. One of them may want to buy it. They may want to split it, but we're in the process of taking care of that. And the way it's raining, it's hard to get around to get them all cut. But we are working on it, so just be patient. My yard needs cutting too. Don't, don't light me up, Brian. Thank you.
The rain's really brought the grass out as all of us know.
My, my district meeting is Saturday. I just realized. This comes Saturday is the third Saturday when you said your district meeting bill. District meeting this third Saturday at 10:00 a.m. at Carver Community Center.
I'll entertain a motion with your...
So moved.